Okay, good evening. I'll call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order and as well as the NRTA advisory. We're having a joint meeting here at the beginning. And Karen Lynn is joining us as our NRTA member. Paula?
Good evening. I'm going to try to get through this without having a coughing attack, lose my voice, and if I can't hear myself, so if I'm talking too softly or loudly, just let me know. I'm Paula Leary, the NRTA Administrator, and Joe Cahoon from AECom is joining us again this evening. They're the consulting company that has been working on this for over a year and a half with us. So I'd like to thank you for this joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and NRTA Advisory Board that will enable discussion respective to the different roles of the two boards and for the discussion of year-round service being back on the agenda. I'd just like to start with a brief summary of the efforts that have brought us to this point. A grant was provided to the NRTA for MassDOT to conduct a feasibility study for year-round service in 2015 as a result of the legislatively mandated regional transportation plans that identified year-round service as an unmet need. In late 2015, the NRTA contracted with AECom to conduct this study. Outreach began in January 2016 with a multifaceted approach to gather public input and participation on the need for and interest in year-round bus service. This outreach effort included a series of interactive public workshops, pop-up tables, stakeholder meetings, and an online survey. Through these outreach efforts, 79% of the respondents said they used the seasonal bus service, and 96% of those respondents said they would use the bus year-round. This phase of the study also included and looked at existing conditions, population density, demographics, and commuter patterns. It was clear from results of the outreach and study that year-round bus service was needed, wanted, and would be used by the community. A final report that included recommendations was completed in April 2016, and presentations were made to the boards in March, April, and June of 2016. At these meetings, there was discussions and questions relative to operations and funding of the service through a fare increase and other potential sources of funding, for example, parking management, state initiative for local community taxes, and local assessment. So this led to Phase Two, the fare study that was conducted from August through December of 2016. AECom was again contracted in addition to LSC Transportation Consultants that conducted the ridership projections. LSC literally wrote the book on ridership modeling in rural areas and developed the model that is still the standard for ridership modeling nationwide and is used as best practices' resources for the Transit Cooperative Research Program of the Transportation Research Board. In the transportation world, that's a big deal. The model is based on demographic and socioeconomic characteristics of year-round population, travel-comute patterns, and tip generators. I guess maybe that wasn't so brief, but I wanted to demonstrate what has led to the presentation tonight and to share that a lot of work, analysis, research, thought, and due diligence by not only transit professionals but also myself and the NRTA's operator who have been running the service for 23 years. We are intimately involved in and aware of every detail of operations of the current service, the demands of the system, and the needs of our customers. I'm proud of the success of our current system and the dedicated people that strive on a daily basis to make it that way and to keep it that way, and that the same dedication will lead to the success of a year-round bus system in Nantucket. And I just want to say that I would not be here or have gone through all of this effort and all of this work and be suggesting year-round bus service if I didn't think it was needed and that it would be successful. So tonight's presentation is a result of these efforts over the past year and a half and addresses questions and concerns raised by prior boards and local officials that has gotten us to the point we are now. My hope is that it can be agreed that year-round service is needed and wanted and that the service needs to be implemented in the best way possible for success through the options being presented and recommended tonight and not to be set up to fail. Funding of the service, of course, is a more difficult topic of discussion, and I certainly understand that. So I think there's a lot of information in the presentation, so if it's okay with the board members, I think being able to go through the whole presentation and then come back for any questions or comments or thoughts, if that's okay. Slide three, Greg. So just to start with a point of information, Slide Three represents the current level of service provided by the NRTA. Nine routes providing service to the Mid-Island areas, Scanson, Maticket, Surfside, Juddies Beaches, and the airport, with the maximum revenue service hours or with service hours on the main routes operating from 7:00 a.m. to midnight during the height of the season. We operated in 148 days in 2016, providing over 19,000 hours of revenue service and over 192,000 revenue miles with just over 287,000 passenger boardings. The three main routes that are operated the entire season, the Mid-Island and Maya Comet Loops and the Scanson via Old South Road route, currently make up 60% of the ridership and service the most populated areas, not just during the summer but of the year-round These areas with Sachem's Path, the town's housing project, and the Richmond Development on Old South Road will only increase that population. At the end of the 2017 season, nearly 6 million riders will have been served since service began in 1995. Next slide, please. To operate the current level of service, the operating budget is roughly $2 million. 1.7 million is fixed route operations and 275,000 is for the year-round demand-response service known as your island ride. The NRTA's local assessment to the town of Nantucket is currently just under $400,000. So to explain the local assessment, local communities that receive transit services are assessed for those services as part of Chapter 161B, the authority of the transit authorities. So after the NRTA's annual audits are completed, the amount of the local share is certified to the Department of Revenue, the State Treasurer, MassDOT, the Town's Finance Director, and that amount is then deducted from the local aid the town in Nantucket receives from the Commonwealth. Right? Got it all right? The NRTA's local assessment increases only by 2.5% annually. There is an exception, however, if new services are being provided, then that allows the community to vote and increase the local assessment by more than 2.5% to pay for the new services the community desires. This along with a fare increase that I will talk about later is how the recommendation for how the year-round service could be paid for. None of the other revenue sources, either past state initiative or were taken off the table like parking management, to be used. So that's the recommendation. So as you can see on the pie chart, the current level of local funding is 20% of the operating cost with fares, federal, and state funding making up the remaining 80%. Next slide. So the bus service goals are to provide service that is affordable, reliable, convenient, and safe. This slide is the recommended base service option. It includes service on the Mid-Island and Maya Comet Loops and what would be the Old South Road, Nobedear Farm Road route with limited trips to Scanson. Again, these routes making up 60% of the current ridership, service high-density year-round populations with year-round housing developments happening or going to be happening, and where major origin and destinations identified through the interactive workshop. By keeping existing successful routes, there is rider familiarity which will make it easier for the rider. Stops are established, so moving signs and benches would not be required. Our GPS system wouldn't need to be changed, various operational issues with that, with customer-related. What we show here is an additional week of service on the Maticket route, and the reason that that's included is the current service in Maticket ends in mid-September. This year it was September 10th. Frequency has decreased to hourly after Labor Day for the additional week of that service, and the public outreach showed respondents' desired service to Maticket through Columbus Day to be consistent with the other main routes. We felt that providing an additional week provided expanded service. The recommended base service provides weekday service from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on weekends. The bar showing Scanson via Old South Road with the 8:00 a.m. start would be the first trip to Scanson. Frequency, let's see, the 30-minute frequency on the Mid-Island and Maya Comet Loops is consistent with the level of service currently provided in the shoulder season. The frequency on Old South Road, Nobedear, is decreased from 60 minutes to 40 minutes with the exception of the five trips per day to Scanson that would create the 60-minute frequency. This would be an additional 214 days of service outside the current service being provided seasonally with a projected daily ridership of 571 riders, and the cost to operate that This slide is the alternate base service option. This would be the minimal level of service for year-round service to be successful. It eliminates the additional week of Maticket service. It maintains the 30-minute frequency on the Mid-Island and Maya Comet Loops and the 40-minute frequency on Old South Road, Nobedear Farm Road, and eliminates the five trips a day to Scanson. It also decreases the hours of service for weekdays and weekends, which we looked at to reduce the cost of the service. It would still provide the additional 214 days of service with a daily ridership of 444 riders, and the cost to operate the alternate base service is $703,000. So these are some customer service limitations with the alternate base service. Decreased hours of operation during the weekend-weekend that results in unreliable service for employment trips. It impacts the customer experience and the potential for use and decreases the ridership and fare revenue potential. Next slide, please. Based on previous board discussions of a fare increase to reduce the additional funding that would be required to fund year-round service, this seemed to be palpable because a fare increase hasn't happened in a number of years, and it would coincide with additional service being provided and was felt would be more acceptable. A fare increase to cover the total cost of operating the service is not reasonable or realistic as it would extremely impact ridership. Ridership would be lost and/or the service would be so reduced and limited that it would not be worth providing. This slide shows the current and proposed fares and passes, and based on the proposed fare and pass increases, the fare revenue that would be generated for the recommended base service is $427,000, and for the alternate base service, $365,800. The fare increase would be implemented at the start of service, which will be discussed in a later slide, and without a fare increase, there would be $300,000 to $350,000 of additional funding needed. Next slide. The funding requirements for the additional service is, the green bar, $411,000 for the recommended base service and $337,200 for the alternate base service. Next slide. So this slide provides a snapshot of what the costs and funding sources are for 12-month service for the recommended base service, the alternate base service, and the current seasonal service. The local assessment line shows what the funding requirement would be for the town. How that would work is the fare increase would be implemented in the spring when the current service begins with year-round service starting in the fall, which would be the NRTA's FY '19 budget. We would benefit from the fare increase throughout the summer service. The local assessment would be certified to the state after the completion of the NRTA's FY '19 audit and would hit the town's local aid on the cherry sheet in FY '21. Next slide. This is an aggregate funding comparison slide of the funding categories for the current level of a $2 million operating budget, the recommended base service of a $2.8 million operating budget, and a $2.7 million operating budget for the alternate base service with the town's local assessment going from 20% to 29% and 27% respectively. What are the next steps are to secure funding for the recommended base service for year-round service and to institute a fare increase for what we'd like to see as the spring of 2018 with the rollout of year-round service in the fall of 2018. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
I'll just start with a comment. Nice job. And I think, like many issues, the board struggles with or assesses, in my case, for this project, the more I've learned about it and become more educated about it, and I've really come to the conclusion that year-round bus service is really part of the commitment we're making to create a community, especially on affordable housing. I mean, I see the issues kind of linked, transportation and housing. And as we continue to build out the Mid-Island area, it really makes sense to provide, you know, year-round bus service. To me, and whether you do the additional routes or Scanson or the Maticket projects, that's really, that's your expertise to decide. The question is, you know, which of the two is the better one? And I think that will, partly of that is a budget issue, and as we go through the budget process, there may only be enough money for one, or there may be enough for two. We haven't really talked about funding strategies either, so it could be general fund, it could be override, I don't know. Anyway, but I'm certainly in favor of year-round bus service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paula, for the presentation. My thoughts on this, I agree, Jim. I think year-round bus service is needed, just from anecdotal talking to people the last couple of months, since this has kind of been on more on our radar. I think overall it gives access to the community, access to healthcare, access to stop and shop, to downtown. If you look at our strategic plan, right, housing, transportation, environment is our top three things. I think this is obviously environment, right, less emissions, less cars on the roads, and then transportation, people have more access. I think if you look at the healthiest cities in the world, they have really, really great transportation. I know we're not a city, and I understand this is going to be a difficult way to fund this, but I'm glad we're talking about it. I could go on for a while, but I'll stop there.
I'll comment. I think it's, I'm a little worried that we're going to have empty buses in January and February. I favored the rollout that went through New Year's and opened up again for daffodil, and it was about half of this cost, if I remember. I think it was $419,000 or so in savings when we talked about it in June of 2016. So I look at it more from that perspective. I don't want to repeat the mistake we kind of made with the Fast Ferry where we got the Fast Ferry in place, but we didn't have the funding, and it was really successful, and then we had to drop it. And so I want to make sure that the funding is, the money is the most important thing. We can want tons of different things, but we're going to do a budget presentation pretty soon, and the long-term finances are frightening. And that's before we put any of the other, you know, some of the things that are going on now into them. So I just, I think we have to be very careful. I'd like to see it roll out maybe a little slower than going full bore, but, you know, I do think it's needed at some point, but I think we should build it slowly and prove it.
I think we have to put it together in such a way where it's reliable and really gives consistent service to the year-round community for it to be successful. And I believe that the consultant had some good points on that last time. I don't know if maybe you'd want to talk about that briefly again?
If you're going to replace the use of your car, it needs to be predictable year-round.
Right. And you can't ride a bike in January, generally.
Harvey Young may be able to, but...
Hello, everyone. Thanks for having me here again today. That's a great question with regard to transit service being available year-round and being reliable and accessible. So if you wanted to build a transit service that people can build their lives around, they need to know that every day they go out there, whether or not they decide to take the bus, that it's there. So if it's not there in January and February, and they need to, you know, plan their life around getting to work, going to the grocery store, getting to medical appointments, they need to put their kids on the bus to do something, having it there is really where that reliability and that knowing that it's there for them is really where that reliability internalizes, you know, gets internalized within commuters and community members.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I think it is consistent and reliable right now, so I think if it's extended, that'll continue. And the other thing is it's safe. I mean, we're really lucky to have a safe transfer, you know, transport, bus service system. I think so this helps middle school and high school students getting around, parents. It's not just workers. It's, I think our second or third Board of Selectmen meeting for me this year, someone in our elder community came up and asked for, you know, discounted fares on taxis. They didn't want to do that. So, I mean, there's lots of different communities, circles out there that could benefit from this. It's the affordability part that is going to be difficult.
Ask a question?
Yes.
Excuse me if I missed something in the presentation, but the budget, was that covering an all-day bus schedule, kind of like we have now?
Yes.
In this budget proposal?
It was, yes.
Was, did you look at providing daily service but maybe not as frequently?
Yes, we did. And part of the alternatives analysis that we conducted as part of the earlier work, we looked at daytime-only service, daytime workday service, you know, limited weekend service. We looked at all of the, you know, various levels of service by days of the week and by frequency, and all of those items during that portion of the study.
Well, I mean, I just wondered for budget purposes. It's such a big jump in the budget to afford the year-round service, and I represent, I'm on the board to represent people with disabilities and medical needs, and, you know, one of my thoughts is it would be great if we had year-round daily service, I mean, for people to be able to get to medical appointments and things.
Absolutely.
But it doesn't necessarily have to be all day long. I mean, if there was some starting point where, I just thought where we could start with year-round service but maybe not as frequently in the winter throughout the day so that people at least knew there was a time every day, but it might not be every hour.
Right. So actually, and Paula, we didn't get into this a lot, so this proposal here is for the, what we're calling the base level of service, which is the winter service, and so actually it's a much lower level of services than it happens in the summer. So then the summer would then be called the expanded service. So it kind of is a change of nomenclature from how things are currently done.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Was there anyone from the public who wanted to comment on this topic?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
My name's Dave Fredericks, for the record. I represent a lot of different people and a lot of different projects, so I'm not speaking for any of those. I'm speaking solely for myself. First observation I have is, goes back to my, what I did for the island for a long time, and it goes back to 21 years ago when I watched Paula. We ran a submarine cable and everyone said, wow! And that's, when I listened to Paula say 1995, Paula and I really took on something different for the island at the exact same time. I look at the 21 years that she's been doing this, and I don't think she's been wrong in anything that she's asked us to consider. I think about when she first did it, and there might have been a couple thousand people the first year that used it, and don't quote me on the number, 287,000 people used it. We have professionals who are telling us we need to do this. We have a board who's got an opinion that says it feels like we need to do something. And so I only urge the board as a taxpayer, as somebody does use it who does think it has value, that if we want it to work, we need to make it something people are willing to give up a car. If I have three cars, I might give up a car because it's going to be consistent, and that's a cost, just like you would pave a road or invest in a sidewalk or invest in a building. And I think we have to think differently as we look at the island. 25 years ago, you went on most of this island from October 15th until May 1st, and it was dead quiet. Old South Road has traffic issues in January. Are they as bad as they are in November? No. But are they real and noticeable and annoying? Absolutely. It's here, the island's changed. Someone who's been doing this a long time is urging us to do the right thing. I hope we make this a priority when we get to funding. Thank you.
I'm generally hearing a consensus for some level of year-round service and that we need to figure out how to budget it.
So maybe just to get the sense of the board, I would make a motion that we adopt the recommendation, we adopt the recommendation for year-round bus service.
Second.
Just to clarify, are we, which level of service, or are we, is that to be determined depending on budget?
I'm trying to dodge that a little bit, so if we can afford it, you know...
Are you suggesting an override, then, to fund this?
Again, we'll talk about how to finance it when we get to the bigger budget, as I said, so, you know, but I would do the recommended personally, so I'd make that part of my motion.
And did you second it?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm abstaining. I don't want to vote for something I don't know how I'm going to pay for it.
Okay. I think we have a direction that we're going to try and figure out how to pay for it. So that, I, did you want to say something else, Paula?
No, I think that's wonderful, and thank you. It gives us something great to work toward, not being involved in the town budget if I could just be kept in the loop on things or if you need things from me or when those discussions are happening.
Okay. Excellent.
Thank you.
So we'll adjourn the NRTA portion of the agenda and move on with the rest of our Board of Selectmen agenda. I do have one, thank you. I do have one change. We have someone who does need to catch a boat, so number five under Town Managers Report is going to move up just past announcements. And with that change, we'll accept the agenda by unanimous consent. Libby, did you want to make the announcements?
Announcements are that this meeting is being video and audio recorded. We also have an announcement regarding the Nantucket Harbor, Shimo, and Plus Area Sewer Extension Project, which is scheduled to begin next Monday evening. Our sewer director, David Gray, is going to give us a brief overview and update of this project, as well as a brief overview of the status of the C Street Pump Station Project.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, David Gray, for the record. The Shimo Harbor, Nantucket Harbor Project will get underway on Monday evening. Most of you have already seen the equipment is arrived, and that's a sign that it's getting ready to start. Deliveries of all the manholes and piping and everything have already begun and underway. They're being stored at the treatment plant for staging. The engineering firm has been doing field interviews for the last three weeks in all areas of the island. They spent most of this week in Shimo doing interviews with property owners on where the locations are and everything. It's been going very, very well so far, and the C Street construction project has been progressing very nicely. They have the new telephone pole in, the new, all the new primary wires are in, the underground's in, the transformer pad has been constructed and is being backfilled this week, and hopefully we'll have a new transformer in place so that we can get ready to do the bypass pumping here shortly so they can start the full construction. So everything's going along very nicely so far, so...
Thank you.
Thank you, David. David has a lot of projects that he's working on, and we're really thankful for his oversight.
I'll just see if there's any public comment for anything not otherwise on our agenda. Bobby?
It's September, and I'm back. Two questions. One, what is the status of the permitting for the dredging of the ditches in Maticket? And the second is, have the bid done? And the second is, have the bid documents been prepared for the reconstruction of straight wharf?
What the board agreed to do regarding Nantucket is work that into the Nantucket Water Quality Improvement Project, which is in the process of getting a scope developed. The straight wharf sidewalk improvements, I think is what you are talking about, are in the planning phase, and we are expecting to go out to bid shortly. Correct, DPW Director?
Construction after Columbus Day.
Construction after Columbus Day.
So that's still on track for this winter, happening?
Yes.
Okay. As far as the ponds go, or the ditches, what are we, is it going to happen before I'm dead, or, because I thought it was kind of a priority when I left the board in April, and evidently, it's not a priority anymore.
Well, I'm not going to speak for the board, and I wouldn't say it's not a priority anymore, but I would say that the idea was to work all potential Nantucket water quality initiatives or improvements into one plan. And that plan has just simply not yet materialized, because we need to engage an engineer consulting firm to prepare the plan for us. And also told that the, if we were to break out the dredging for the Nantucket ditch on its own, it would require a number of studies that we do not have the budget funding for, in excess of $100,000. So I don't, definitely don't think it's not a priority. I would say it is a priority, but in conjunction with all of the other items. And potentially, it would be done before you pass away.
I got to say, I'm pretty disappointed. You know, this was something that came up, we talked about it at great length when I was still on the board. It was very clear to me, and I thought to the board at the time, that this would definitely help the water quality along pond and Hidah Creek. The fact that sewer is probably not ever coming to Nantucket in the next 10 years is a reality. It's not going to come, it's not going to pass town meeting. Matt, you're 100% right. People are going to start looking at this budget and these tax increases and go, wait a minute. You know, I can't believe that we can't find $100,000 to do this. We spent $80,000 on a strategic plan study, but we can't find $100,000 to fix a pond.
I think, Bob, the thing that got me, Bob, is I think it's the, you know, how do I say? What sort of slowed it down is we can't, we just can't go out and dig a ditch anymore. It's not, you know, as you know, it's not as simple as it was 30 years ago.
I understand, and that, but you've got to start sooner or later. You can't just keep studying things to death.
I agree with you, and we pushed Libby to do this, and the response that we got back was, there has to be this study, there has to be this thing, this thing, in order the state allow us to do it.
So do the studies. You've got to start somewhere.
Studies to get to permitting, right?
And I would argue that that's what we're doing. By rolling into the Nantucket thing, the things we have to do will get done in order us to do it. Hopefully, it'll be quicker than you think.
We'll spend $200,000 on a study that won't get us no closer to fixing any of these problems. That's my concern.
But we have to do the studies to submit for the permitting.
I hope you're wrong. We're going to hire some consultant, and they're going to say, yep, you need to sewer Nantucket, yep, you need to dig the ponds, yep, you need to run sewer. We go through this, it's like never any loop, you know.
I agree with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? I don't believe there's any new business, so now we're just going to skip to number five under Town Managers' Report.
Madam Chairman, to a little bit introduce this, as the board knows, we've been talking for, I'm going to say several years now, about ways in which to decrease the cost of health insurance for town employees. As we know, it is a cost that is growing significantly annually. Many municipalities are facing this situation, and in 2011, the legislature adopted a general law that allows municipalities to make plan design changes outside of the traditional collective bargaining process, however, within a statutorily prescribed process. We did this in 2013, or 2012 or 2013, and not being able to reach agreement with our collective bargaining units regarding other methods to reduce costs, such as contributions, the employee and the town's share of contributions to the plan, or the elimination of the indemnity plan, we have turned to this option, which is allowable by law. And we've come to an agreement with the committee, the employee committee, that is required as part of the process, and I think Ed's going to take us through what the agreement calls for.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. So the management team and the Public Employee Committee have agreed to implement changes to the health insurance plans effective November 1st through June 30th of 2018. Just to start off on a good note, the, these changes have produced a total cost avoidance to the town and the employees of over $1,500,000. So pretty significant changes, and that's an annual figure. And then part of the regulations require that in an effort to offset the impact of some of the much higher deductibles and copays, that we have what's called a mitigation fund, which is equal to 25% of that overall savings figure. Turns out to be $396,756. And working with the Public Employee Committee, the management team worked out and developed a mitigation fund. And it will be an amount paid to each subscriber, less any applicable taxes, federal or state taxes. And they'll be issued checks to be distributed with the November 9th, 2017 payroll. The amounts will be $368.43 for an individual, and $781.89 for a family. So each participant that was in the plan as of, I believe, September 1st, individual or family, will get those amounts of money distributed to them at that time. During these negotiations, significant, once again, significant plan changes were agreed to. There was a proposal to limit future plan changes and/or any application to enter the group insurance commission. Originally, it was asked that we consider a three-year moratorium, and the management team discussed it, and our concern was federal government Cadillac tax coming up in 2020. So based upon approval of this board, obviously, we agreed to a two-year, almost a two-year moratorium, a moratorium that no changes will be made until before June 30th of 2019. That'll give us plenty of time to react if the Cadillac tax actually even exists at that point in time. What else do we have here? The employees and early retirees that participate in the plan will be notified, had to be notified, 60 days in advance of these changes, which is part of the reason things got slowed up a little bit. But they did all receive notifications on September 1st of these changes being enacted on November 1st, so everyone's been notified. And it was a, it was a real joint effort of, obviously, the Town Manager's Office and the Finance Department and the HR Department, but certainly on the part of the towns' unions working through their Public Employee Committee to, you know, get this agreement done. One other final thing I'd mention here is, we also have received the final rate increase numbers on the senior plans, Medicare-eligible plans, where the rates change on January 1st, and it was a 10th of 1% rate increase. So very, very minor. It's about 26 cents a month to the rate. There may be some formulary changes in the list of acceptable prescriptions. There are some changes every January 1st. Blue Cross Blue Shield has agreed to come out here in advance of that to sit with any of the Medicare-eligible retirees, to go over any concerns they have, and to make sure they have answers before January comes around. I think I covered virtually everything that occurred during the meetings, but it was, it turned out to be successful.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Any questions?
Do we have any questions?
No.
Do we need to vote?
I'd make a motion that we ratify the agreement as outlined in our packet.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thanks again.
Thank you, Ed. Madam Chairman, I forgot to mention that I believe tomorrow, we're going to be doing some sidewalk, sorry, crosswalk work at Southwater Street and Main Street. Is that right? That crosswalk work, cobblestone?
Yes, we were, we were informed this afternoon, kind of late, that there's an opportunity to get the crosswalks re-bricked at, on Southwater Street at India and Cambridge, those two crosswalks that are in dire need of repair. We have a mason on island, and we have the time to do it. So it's last minute, we normally don't want to work this way, but we're trying to get the word out. We're going to start after the first freight boat comes in tomorrow morning, so we're not going to start until a little bit more mid-morning. And one lane will be open at all times, and we'll have a detail. And we're being told that it will be completed by mid-afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, we're on to approval of minutes warrants and pending contracts. Were there any changes or questions about the minutes? Got a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Approval of payroll warrants and treasury warrants?
Move to approve.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Pending contracts, I think there were a few things that Libby wanted to go over.
There are a number of pending contracts, and I would only, unless there are other board questions, focus your attention on, on the second page. There is a professional services contract for town admin with Castle Boost Associates, $14,650, and this is funded from a prior year town meeting. It is to relocate the municipal fuel station from the fire station at 130 Pleasant Street to this property out here. And can you pull up the map? We just wanted to show the board where the station is planned to be located out here.
Well, that's existing. So the next one? Yep, there it is.
So Deputy Chief Gibson is here, if you need any, he's the project manager for this. If you need any questions answered about it, there was an initial concern about where the proximity to this building that it'll be located, and the proximity out in the surrounding properties, so it's going to be quite close to the building and not take up space out in the outer.
I think it's a great spot.
Looks good.
Good.
Good. Thanks.
Had a few words.
Additionally, we have two contracts that came in late and weren't able to be added to your agenda until today, and they include a professional services agreement for our island home with cross-country staffing, $75,000. These are for travel nurses for the island home. We are looking at a very serious staffing issue with registered nurses at the facility, and this is the only way we've been able to come up with to address it as soon as possible. And in order to accommodate them, we are going to have to locate housing. So we've been able to secure a seasonal lease with the Gottliebs for a rental from October through May. That's actually supposed to say May 2018, for the, for these travel nurses. And I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Rachel. It's, it's a bit of a situation there.
Good evening. I just want to say thank you for allowing these contracts to come on to this agenda at the last minute. We have just had two of the floor RNs leave our facility, which unfortunately has put us unable to meet the requirement to have eight hours of an RN continuously for every 24 hours in the facility. I have been working with the state so that they understand our situation, and they are very appreciative that we are working to do something in a temporary basis with travel nurses while we look at a more permanent placement and advertise and staffing. I just didn't want to continue to either have to mandate the current nurses that I have and potentially jeopardize any level of our care and our census level at this time, and without having any additional staffing. So I appreciate that. That's two positions that we are looking for right now, a 32 and a 40 hour.
I guess my only comment is that in addition to a cost impact for this, you know, as Rachel knows, it also has an operational impact. These folks are coming here that I assume have never worked here before.
Yes, correct.
So they, so they need to be trained and educated, and it's a, can be a fairly disruptive to bring contract labor into an established workforce. I know Rachel will do whatever it takes to make that as seamless as possible, but it's a broader issue than just a cost issue.
Yes, we have been working with the woman at cross-country staffing and understands that hopefully, we will get a nursing home experienced nurse, not just any nurse, so that there is some level of understanding there, because the operations work a little differently than a hospital. We also don't necessarily anticipate needing somebody for that entire period of time, but in the event there's any other overlaps, we also have another RN retiring in October. That's Ann Lindley, who has many, many years, I believe it's 36 or 37 years of service. So in anticipation of also filling that in the near future, if we have to utilize this again, that's why we're asking for what we are.
How much does housing impact your ability to retain staff, to attract and to hire and retain?
I think it's a very large impact on what we do. There have been a few individuals who've responded to some of the advertisements that we've done in the past, they just can't find housing. Or it's the relocation of their entire family, so they might be able to find one place, but it's only seasonal, or it only has one bedroom. So there is some challenges that we have in trying to retain anybody from off-island. There's not a lot here either, so. Thank you.
And I ask that just to remind people that that's going to increasingly be an issue with all town departments, and we really need to get a handle on it, or we're not going to be in business.
Particularly as more people retire who have secure housing. Are there any other questions on the contracts? Does somebody want to make a motion?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So then we're on to consent items. We have two gift acceptances, and just a parking space designation change. Does anybody have any questions on those three items? Does someone want to make a motion on?
We did get a letter about the item three.
Yes.
Asking that we continue to make that temporary and make the determination on an annual basis, which I understand we've been doing. So I don't know the reason necessarily to make it permanent. It is a town asset. Everyone's certainly respectful of the individual that we're accommodating, but it may make sense to continue it as temporary.
I think the thought process was to not have to continue to bring it up, because it will probably be needed for her on a permanent basis, and at the time that she no longer needs it, then we would bring it back to remove it, rather than having to put it on an agenda every year.
Okay, I didn't, that's news. Okay, I understand that.
Okay.
There's no difficulty in removing it?
Right.
We'll have to remember that.
Which is what's happened in other cases.
Maybe we should say, put in the minutes, that's the board intention, at some future date to bring, put it back into the mix.
Time of approval?
Can you, okay, on the parking space, or all three?
All three.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Citizen departmental requests?
I thought someone was going to be here for this.
Is Kevin here for this? Should I read, do you want me to read the proclamation?
I think that Sergeant Marshall is ready to take him.
Excellent.
He was dozing out there.
Thank you. So Kevin Marshall, Sergeant in the Nantucket Police, also the co-chair for the Cape Town Island Suicide Prevention Coalition. I want to thank the board for adding this to your agenda, as well as recognizing this.
I want to thank the board for adding this to your agenda, as well as recognizing this week as National Suicide Prevention Week. I also just want to throw out there that through the Nantucket Police Department and through the coalition, we will continue to offer free gatekeeper suicide prevention trainings for any group or organization who is looking to go through that. So they can go to our website, they can go through the website, suicidasperventable.net to get further details. Would you like me to read this, or?
Sure.
Okay. So this is the week for National Suicide Prevention Week. This is the proclamation that each of the board members has signed. It says, whereas in the United States, one person dies by suicide every 12 minutes, and 121 people die by suicide each day, and whereas 20 veterans die by suicide each day, and whereas suicide is the second-leading cause of death for the Massachusetts residents ages 15 to 44, and the suicide rate on the Cape and Islands is 1.4 times higher than the state average. Whereas suicide is a tragic and disruptive event for families and communities, it is estimated that annually there are 6.3 million suicide loss survivors who have lost a loved one to suicide, and whereas suicide is a public health issue and a community concern, and through increased education and awareness of the issue, a great number of suicides can be prevented. Therefore, we do hereby officially designate the week of September 10 through the 16th, 2017, as Suicide Prevention Week for the Town of Nantucket, Nantucket County. We also have a ribbon ceremony taking place this Saturday at 12:30 at the library. Again, website for further details. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Town managers' report?
Okay, thank you. We have our energy coordinator, Lauren Sinatra, here. We have a couple of items that Lauren is going to take us through.
Good evening to the board, Lauren Sinatra, for the record. The first item is to request a letter of support from the Board of Selectmen for the Town of Nantucket's application for the Massachusetts Clean Energy Center's Heat Smart Massachusetts Pilot Program, which would essentially allow our community to offer promotionally-priced, bulk-purchased, clean heating and cooling systems, specifically the air-source heat pumps and solar hot water systems, to our community. Only four communities will be selected. It's a very competitive solicitation due on Friday, and we believe this letter of support will certainly strengthen our application. The Energy Office did solicit a survey from the community, trying to gauge public interest in this program, and in just a week, we received 250 responses, and over 90% of those who took the survey indicated they were likely, definitely likely, to install an air-source heat pump or solar hot water system if it was offered at a discounted price. So I would welcome a letter of support and your good luck in, you know, sending in our proposal on Friday to the Massachusetts Clean Energy Center.
Thank you, Lauren.
Was the 250 from Nantucket? 250 people from Nantucket?
250 residents from Nantucket.
Wow.
And this program would also apply to small businesses as well.
And of those 250, what would this grant cover?
That would be up to a competitive solicitation and the chosen installers, so that needs to be negotiated, and I believe in the past, the discount has been negotiated based on the volume of sales.
So make a motion that we provide the letter of support for Heat Smart grant application.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
And the second item is to welcome back to the stage Richard Andre from Vineyard Power, who is going to deliver an update on the Vineyard Wind offshore wind development. So with that, here's Richard.
Okay. Thank you, sorry for that. Great, cool. Thank you. Well, thank you. As Lauren said, thank you for having me back. It's my third visit to update the board, and I really truly appreciate it. Obviously momentum's picking up on these projects, so it's really appreciated, and I welcome the opportunity. First, I'm going to, does this, you'll have to click it now? Yeah, so next, please, it's okay, next again. So I want to just give just a brief overview of how we got here. I'm not going to go into all the details, but there's two processes that we're working with offshore wind in the federal waters surrounding Nantucket and Martha's Vineyard. One was a federal process. It started in 2009, so it's a little over seven years, and it was kind of a fairly extensive process. There was a lot of stakeholder outreach, a lot of community input. Members of Nantucket's town and Energy Committee participated in that with the federal government, as well as towns on the Vineyard and the Cape. And the real purpose of that in the beginning was to determine where should offshore wind be located. And as you see on that map there, it's a really vast area of ocean. That was what was first proposed by the federal government, and they also, when they came out here, federal waters start three miles off the shores, which you can see is where the hash marks stop closer to shore. But through a lot of outreach, they eventually pushed the lease areas to about 13 miles from shore. So that was the federal process. There was also a state process that was going on, and when I was here last, the state passed a, well, not last, but about a year ago, the state passed a bill that requires the utility companies, National Grid and EverSource, to purchase offshore wind. And the requirement is for 1,600 megawatts over 10 years, so that's 2027. And what does this megawatts mean? It's about a million homes or 12% of the state's electrical demand, so it's quite a significant amount of electricity. Next, please. So that big area was condensed through a lot of this outreach, and what we see here is there's effectively five individual lease zones. Currently, there's a leaseholder here, here, and here. This is the project I'm representing, Vineyard Wind. These two lease areas have not been leased yet, and the federal government was out early this year and announced that they're going to hold, or their intention is to hold an auction for those final two lease zones. So maybe in a year from now, I won't be speaking about three leaseholders, I'll be speaking about five. I mentioned the state law about procurement of offshore wind. Currently, only these three leaseholders are eligible to bid. Because the way the law was written, eligible respondents, excuse me, into the RFP have to have a lease that's greater than 10 miles from shore, which these achieve, and they had to have achieved their lease in a competitive process, which these three leaseholders did. And what they mean by competitive, it was an auction, and it was competitively bid on. Obviously, this project does not satisfy both of those conditions, so it looks like there'll be three respondents in this proposal. What I meant by the momentum's picking up very quickly, the law was passed and signed into law by Governor Baker in September. The first RFP response has to be submitted December 20th, so that's really right around the corner, so things are really picking up as far as the project development side.
So you'll be bidding on one of those other two?
No, no, we will not be. Well, at least, I can't say we will not be, but it doesn't likely, it will highly be unlikely.
The other two may.
They may, but I, my suspicion, it'll be two new entrants, but that's also just my suspicion. I mentioned today, we presented to the Rotary Club, but the last auction that was held, or maybe the second-to-last auction, was New York State, and the right to sign the lease went for $40 million in the auction, so it's, and I only mention that as a sign that it's really competitively heating up, and there's a lot of interest in the United States now to develop offshore wind, so it's really picking up a lot of momentum. So what I want to speak about specifically today, the last time I was here, I mentioned that we were going to be doing survey work, and our focus was going to be about our cable route. So once you have a wind farm operating in this area, you need to connect it somewhere to the grid to supply the grid electricity. We did survey work, which just finished last week. We had vessels based out of Martha's Vineyard, Vineyard Haven, and New Bedford, and they surveyed through Meskiga Channel up to the Cape, and they also surveyed up to Nantucket, around Maticet, and I'll talk a little bit about that later, and also across Nantucket, Nantucket Sound. And the second thing I want to update the select board on is a requirement for us to do visualization impact study, and we're going to be doing that, and I'll give a little brief update on that. Next, please.
Try to write it down, see if it works now.
It's working, great. That's great, thank you so much. So as I mentioned, I've been out here three times a year ago to inform you about the project. We came out here just before the summer to speak about our survey work, and that's what I'm here to do now. So we did the survey work, and what I can report on that is that the Nantucket option, which is either, you know, instead of going through Meskiga Channel right to the Cape, but coming over to Nantucket and going overland, across the island, and out, is still a viable option. So in other words, the survey came back positive, there was nothing that was, you know, knocking it off the table. So I mean, I guess that would be good news if the town still thinks it's good news. And to remind us, the reason why we're looking at it is to avoid the need for a third cable connection to the island of Nantucket, and to try to avoid those costs, or at least some of those costs. What we do know is bringing a cable to Nantucket and overland is more expensive than going through Meskiga, so that's all of the stuff that we still need to figure out and how to work that through. As I mentioned, we're getting ready to respond to the RFP by December 20th, and we're really well in and knee-deep in federal and state permitting, and that's quite an extensive process, which still would have at least two, multiple years left on that process of actually getting a, you know, kind of a building permit to build these projects. And we're continuing to do our outreach. I mentioned we were at the Rotary Club today, but we continue to meet with fishermen particularly, and a lot of environmental groups, as well as the tribes of Mashpee Wampanoag, Aquinaw Wampanoag, and the Narragansett Tribe out of Rhode Island. So that's an update on the survey work, so I will say, we are having meetings next week with the Nantucket Planning and Economic Development Commission, so we look forward to that. We're also hoping to revisit and have follow-up meetings with the DPW about potential best cable routes across the island. I can talk a little bit about that if questions, if time allows, I'll happily do that. But now I want to switch to visualizations. So visual impact is obviously a big concern of communities that are living near the shore. You know, what are these turbines going to look like and how close to shore they are? We conducted a survey in Martha's Vineyard in 2010, because we were really trying to get ammunition to support our proposal that the wind farm should not be three miles or six miles from shore. And we did that, and we looked across four locations on the Vineyard, Gayhead, a beach called Squibnocket, and then along the south shore, two beaches along the south shore. And what we did was, we modeled what 17 turbines would look like at six distances, so of the 500 people that responded, they saw a computer simulation of offshore wind at three miles, and they would click, and it would go to six miles, they would click, and each time the turbines would move further offshore, people would comment if it was acceptable or unacceptable to them. And the results of that, approximately 500 respondents, was that around the 10-mile mark is where the majority of the respondents thought it was acceptable. So in other words, below 10 miles, the majority said it wasn't acceptable, even people that were in support of offshore wind projects before taking the survey, so that was kind of telling for us. But as you move from 10 miles out to 14 and so forth, it really becomes very acceptable. And in fact, at something around 14, this is a little bit off here, around 14%, it's a little bit of about 80% of the respondents say it's acceptable. So we used that when we spoke to the federal government. So that's just a little bit of background. This was one of the screenshots of the survey, so this is 14 miles from shore, so approximately what the wind farms that we're proposing to build will be. It's from a beach on the south shore of Martha's Vineyard, and you could, on a very, very clear day, this would be, you know, a cloud index of, you know, let's say, out of a scale of eight, which would be down towards two. So it's kind of an autumnal, clear, high-pressure day, so you can see them out there if you look close enough. So what BOM requires, and we have better pictures for people who want to see them on our computer, if that's of interest later on. So coming back to the process from the federal government, BOM requires that if a project is visible from a national historic site, which would be a national landmark, and the whole island of Nantucket is a national landmark, we're required to do a visual impact review. So we're well into that process. It's required by these two acts up here, and so I want to talk a little bit about that. Firstly, the first thing that one does is take an inventory of national historical sites, but in this case, it's the island, as well as some specific sites. Then we came out and do, to do a site visit, which we did about a couple weeks ago, and I'll show you a bit about the results about that. And then we actually hire consultants that come out and actually do a visualization, and they do a visualization study, or simulation, I should say, on what the specific project will look like, not, you know, a hypothetical project, but it will be our project. And this just shows you that it's not just the simple taking a picture and putting it on a computer screen, there's a little bit of technology behind trying to recreate what one would see if they were standing on a beach or a specific location. So we, out here last week doing that site review, as I mentioned, and since the whole island is the landmark, we went around and toured the island, and this hash mark, and in fact, the hash mark should be around here too, but this is the hash mark, I'm just following it over here, and all the way up to here, shows, and in the middle, shows what we determine the only locations that our wind farm would be possibly seen from, possibly seen from, so it's not saying it will be. And the reason why those are the locations is as you move further inland, the vegetation or the topography of the earth just makes it impossible to even see the beach, let alone 14 miles out to sea. And we could talk a little bit about some of the locations. If you're up here, obviously far away, but there's a view from up here that looks right through Smith Point and Tucker Knuck out to the wind farm, so it would be potentially We picked a site here, but it could have been any number of sites along here. And then there's a site here, and it's called Barrett Hill Road, but I was reminded, it's the road to head of the Plains, so just as you passed, on Maticet Road, past Eel, what? Eel Point Road, just as you go about a quarter mile, it's the dirt road that cuts off to the left. There's a spot on that road, about a quarter mile down the road, where there's a clearing, and you can see the beach, it's just a high point, you get a really great distance of the beach, of the surf down there, so that's also a possible site. When we met with the Rotary Club today, and we also had a public session, one of the feedback we got was, we might consider a site on Tucker Knuck as well to do, so we're going to consider that. And part of this process is to get that same input from the Board of Selectmen, if they have any concerns, or think of any other sites that might be, if you look. So right now, those are the three, the three sites. These are also not the greatest to see from the screen, but we have them on our computer if anybody wants to see them. But this is just other visual simulations that were done for offshore wind farms in the United States, proposed offshore wind farms in the United States. This is a proposed offshore wind farm in North Carolina. What's interesting, it's 10 nautical miles, so closer. The heights of these turbines are the same heights that our proposed turbines would be, approximately 700 feet to the top of the blade. It's a very high, very tall structure. It's 400 feet to the top of the tower, and then the blades go up another 300 so feet. And you can see, just to point out, that the backlighting also has an impact on when you can see. So the sun rising in the east shows, the backlighting shows those turbines showing up a little bit more than they do at sunset, so that's something to consider. This is an offshore wind farm in France. I point out here, the index, the cloudiness index is four out of eight, so what might be more typical of a summer day on Nantucket, when there's haze and humidity in the air. Very hard to pick out an offshore wind farm here, but it's there, if you look hard enough. And I was, as I was reminded today by my colleague Rachel, even for somebody like myself who looks, and Rachel who looks for wind farms, when we have a chance to visit them, they're even hard to see if you're looking for them. But, you know, at certain conditions, you can see them. And this is just to show you at a different day, cloud index of eight over eight, you know, they're not even visible at all. So these are the kind of things that will, our visual simulation is going to look at. So with that, I thank you again. I've allowed time for questions, either on the cable route in the survey, or on the visuals, visual simulations. I thank you again.
So when you say it's more expensive than running it through the channel to run it across?
looking for them. But, you know, at certain conditions, you can see them. And this is just to show you at a different day, cloud index of eight over eight, you know, they're not even visible at all. So these are the kind of things that will, our visual simulation is going to, is going to look at. So with that, I thank you again. I've allowed time for questions, either on the cable route and the survey, or on the visuals, visual simulations. And thank you again.
So when you say it's more expensive than running it through the channel to run it across the island, but not more expensive than running the third cable, and it would be 100% renewable? Is that, am I thinking of that correctly?
Well, I'll say that's still not determined, but you hit on something very interesting. We know it's more money than running it through Meskiget. We don't know if it's less money than running a third cable.
Okay.
So that's what we need to determine. Because that's the sweet spot that we need to hit, right? It doesn't make sense for us to do it. It doesn't make sense for Nantucket nor us, I think, to do it.
Okay. Questions, comments?
If the cable did come overland here, what sort of, what does that look like?
Okay. You've just, thank you for reminding me of the last slide. So, you know, obviously, we looked along the south shore, and we've met with the airport, we've met with the DPW, we've met with the wastewater treatment manager as well, all with the help of Lauren. And one of the areas we focused on quickly was avoiding downtown, obviously, for a project, you know, the infrastructure work that would be required. We wanted to do that. And we've been focusing on an area west of the island. And I've, we've identified an area around here, you know, we don't know yet, but Mattikit Road or the Mattikit area. And somewhere coming up, we've identified the DPW or the town's landfill as a potential location for a substation that would be required. Because if we build the cable here, we need a connection to have a substation so Nantucket can get power off of it. This would provide an ideal location, and there's sufficient space there to do that. And then we've identified an exit from the island, right here, identified as Deonis Beach. But yet, all of the specifics are yet to be determined with the work, the cooperation of the town and talking with DPW and all the other authorities, including CONCOM. Does that answer your question?
How far is the distance from Nantucket to the sites?
Yeah. Thanks for asking.
Could you just repeat that question?
Yes. So I was asked, how far is the, our wind farm lease area from the shore of Nantucket? It's 14 miles from here, from Mattikit. It's about 13 miles south of Martha's Vineyard, from the south beach of Martha's Vineyard, just to give you a sense of that. Yeah, I'm sorry.
That was my other question. So, is it, does it just look like regular telephone poles? Like if you're...
Oh, these would be, you mean on the island?
Yeah.
They would be buried underground.
Oh, it would be buried.
They would be buried underground. So it would require trenching, burial in a conduit, a duck bank, excuse me.
Perfect, yeah.
Which would, and if that was the case, you know, those, you know, those duck banks could, you know, potentially be used for other things as well. So whether it's fiber optics and so forth.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Yes, go ahead.
What are the advantages for, for your company to go through Nantucket versus, not altruistically, I understand, but...
Well, one of the things that Vineyard Wind has been doing especially, because it started on Martha's Vineyard, as I mentioned, our cooperative started in 2009. I only got a chance to meet Lauren about three years ago. But one of the things Vineyard Wind has committed to is delivering community benefits to these projects, for these projects. So whether it's in the form of jobs, infrastructure investments, or infrastructure savings. So I wouldn't say it's totally altruistic, but there is a very, very large leaning towards delivering community benefits and getting communities to want to support these projects and see the benefits from them.
Okay, thanks.
But, but on that, I think it is important to know that having the town's support, and I know it's not just the Board of Selectmen, it's also the residents, but also the other bodies, is really important because that's the only way we will do this. We won't push for this. It really will be something that the town really sees a value in, and then we would happily pursue it. But I just want to point out that the support of the Selectmen and the residents and the other committees are kind of vital to seeing this happen. So that's how I would comment on that.
One more question. What's timeline? Is it, is it the next 12 months for us to figure out if we...
It could be, yes.
I know it's really rough.
I'll say yes, and Rachel could add to this. Would you like to add to this, Rachel?
I can think of one.
Yeah, that'd be great. Wouldn't mind introducing my, Rachel Pactor from Vineyard Wind.
Hi, so I'm Rachel Pactor. I manage all the permitting for, for the whole project, which is super easy, so you can imagine, federal, state, and local permitting. But, so it could be fairly quickly. So we will be, obviously, Rachel talked about the auction that we will be a part of. If we win, we're going to want to deliver a project as quick as we possibly can. So if this makes sense, I think we're going to be figuring that out on our end over the next couple of months. And I think we'll be expecting to, hoping to have a dialogue, you know, to really kind of come to, and I assume it would be a mutual agreement as to whether it makes sense. So I think, I think, you know, we'll probably want to have some more concrete discussions relatively soon.
So are you looking for support from the community on your project as a whole, or and/or the cable through Nantucket?
Just the cable route through Nantucket.
Okay.
We'd love your support for the project as a whole, but, but really specifically, it's about the cable route. Because as I said, with the intention to avoiding a third undersea cable, which potentially the residents would bear the cost of that. So we're trying to save that.
Okay.
And those discussions, I should add, would soon, as this develops, include national grid. You know, the regulated utility that operates the system out here.
Great. So we'll look forward to seeing you in a few months?
Yes, again, I hope. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, everyone.
Next, we have fiscal '17, end-of-year budget reports for the General Fund Airport, Wanna Comet, and Sconset. I think you had the prior. In August, you did the other ones. So Brian and/or Julia, someone's going to take us through the general fund first?
I know you'll find it.
Thank you.
It should have been in there.
Sorry, I went by how it's on the agenda, not how it's in there.
Did it not get included? Because we sent it. We did send it, I know that.
Do you want to start with airport, and then we can try to find it?
Thank you. Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I'd like to, before I give the financial report, just update the board on an event that occurred this morning at the airport.
Yes, please do.
As you may know, we are scheduled to exercise our emergency plan today through a requirement that the FAA has every three years to do a full-scale exercise. In preparation for that event, at about 7:15 this morning, we actually had a crash. So it was called Alert Three. All the units responded. Our airport team did a great job. The Nantucket Fire Department, Police Department, Massachusetts State Police, everybody did a wonderful job. We had the evaluators on-site. They were monitoring the event, and they seemed to think everything went smoothly. So luckily, the one occupant was treated and released at the hospital. So I just wanted to make everybody aware of that.
That's good news. But everybody's okay.
On the financial side of the House, our revenues came in at about $1.2 million over budget and about $200,000 better than last year's actuals. The expenses were about 1.3 below budget and just slightly below last year's actuals. And earnings before transfers from retained earnings were 1.285 million. With the retained earnings applied, it was 2.4 million. And then once you take all the ins and outs and everything, the certified retained earnings last year were about 1.6 million. After all the ins and outs, they're anticipated to be about 2.1 million at the end of last fiscal year. So we're a little better than last year and still just working on financial sustainability.
Great. How's everybody responding to the new parking? Is it...
To the parking?
Going relatively smoothly?
So far, so good. We haven't had any significant complaints or anything. We're still going through the transition process with violations and things, but it's working fairly well.
Is the payback formula still with FAA?
The, I'm sorry?
The payback?
To the town?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, we're working with Brian on getting some additional details to the FAA.
Okay. Any other, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Did we find the general fund, or should we go to Wanna Comet?
We did find it, yes. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. So overall, the general fund performed very well. Again, this is the new format that we had, we presented to you before. We are working on rolling it out for the enterprise funds as well, hopefully by the first quarter of 2018. But as you can see, overall, revenues and expenditures ended up exactly where we were hoping they would. Revenues were about $3 million more than budgeted. We did see some sustained growth in excise tax. There was additional tax collections, not only in fiscal '17, but prior-year tax collections, that accounted for a large portion of that. On the expenditure side, we came within where we expected to do. The good positive note is we needed very few year-end transfers because of the good work between not only my, Julia, in the Budget Office and financial analysts, but also the departments meeting on a regular basis to make sure that we're closing POs and we're staying within the budgets as projected. So overall, we had a very, a very positive year. There is one thing that I will point out. We do like to include the Muni Watch, and there's a couple of things on that that we are watching. Overall, rooms tax and meals tax came in very close to last year. We did not see the sustained double-digit growth in both of those, as well as building permits. They're very close to where they ended the previous year. It is something that we're watching, and this first quarter will give us kind of an indication of where we think fiscal '18 is headed, especially with rooms and meals tax, because this is one of, the September 30th payment is for June, July, and August, which is typically one of the largest payments that we get. It's something that we will continue to monitor as we always do. And if there needs to be any adjustments, we certainly will bring it for, to the town manager for a discussion on how we manage that.
I like this format a lot, by the way.
Okay, good. Well, we're, we're working on rolling it out, like I said, for all the enterprise funds. And we're working with the individual enterprise funds on what they would like included in as well. So.
One suggestion on the, is put debt service and override as two separate items instead of just combining them all.
Okay, we can, we can look at that.
Yeah, I think that would help.
Okay.
I just have a question about the motor excise tax. Is it normal for it to fluctuate significantly?
Well, there's going to be some fluctuations just because of the methodology that it's based on in terms of the MSRP for the cars and people buying and doing that. It will fluctuate if people are moving from the island or off the island in terms of when it's billed. But a lot of that is collection of prior-year excise taxes as well. So that's why we've seen the sustained some increases in the last couple of years. Plus, their, year-over-year, we have experienced some higher bills, more billings, which translate into higher dollars in the excise tax year. So.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Water, Wanna Comet, and Sconset?
Good evening. Mark Willett with Wanna Comet Water. Our revenues were up as well last year, directly related to water connections and water use fees. With that, we also had an increase in our expenditures and what it, what it costs to operate. The operations budget was increased a little bit due to the supplies we had to buy to install the new services. So we added about 110 new water connections last year. That's more than two a week. And it doesn't seem to be slowing down anytime soon. Other than that, we're in pretty good financial standing. There will be in excess of about 1.6 million at the end. And we will continue to use that towards our capital projects to improve the system.
I guess I have a quick question. I'm looking at year-to-date payroll salary was 13%. Medicare is 13. There's not much we can do about that.
Yeah, the payroll is directly related to overtime issues.
Right.
Guys out in the field a little bit more with projects going on.
Right. Is that going to, do you see, do you find, do you have a project, a way to control that?
We don't. We try to sit down with the operations manager and put a number to it, but, you know, we don't know when a water main's going to break or when a hydrant's going to get hit. We can put a best guess to it, but it's, it really is a guess.
Right. Now, that, that sort of level of growth is scary. 10% doubles every seven years.
Matt, it is, it is, and we have very big, very big projects coming down the pipe. So those numbers are, are going to get even bigger in this coming year.
Could you mitigate it by hiring? Could you hire another person to mitigate it?
We have, Heidi and I have been talking about that this week. And it, and it's probably something that's going to happen.
Yeah, okay. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to look at that. I see things like that. As a businessperson, I, you know, I get a little scared.
And we're, we're getting stretched pretty thin. We're managing, we're managing right now. But I think when some of the projects along Old South Road take place, and also to keep up with other department projects, like the sewer project, that we'll be involved with and helping out, you know, there'll be times when one will be shorthanded. So another, another person will be needed.
And is it overtime, or is any of it raises or increases, or anything like that happen too?
There was, not last year, no.
So that didn't reflect, that's not reflected here yet? Okay, thanks.
Move right to Sconset.
Sconset.
Sconset, as, the revenues are also up. Unlike Wanna Comet, there, there are not a lot of new connections in Sconset. There were a few, but not very many. I know there is a potential for a lot of land out there to have maybe 38 to 40 new connections. The stubs are already there. It would, it would be an increase in next year's budget, or whatever year that project happens.
Is that that Cannonberry subdivision?
Yes, it's down off that, off that way.
What's the name?
Cannonberry.
Cannonberry, it's, the name of the street. The property goes, it backs up from the beach, past the summer house, backs up to town-owned property, I think, by the treatment plant in Sconset.
Is there such a thing as a Cannonberry?
I don't know.
I don't know, just, okay.
I think it's B-U-R-E.
It's not Berry.
That's what I'm going to...
It's how, it's how I said it.
The increase in revenue was obviously from the water use fees. There was more water used in Sconset than we projected.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. Next is a preliminary review of fiscal '19 general fund budget projections. So Brian's going to take us through this. And I wanted to let you know the different things we would like to go over with you tonight, and to emphasize that there are some numbers in this presentation, but they are very preliminary. There are a lot of things we don't know yet. This is a presentation that we give you around this time annually to get us all to start thinking about the upcoming budget development process. So we'd like to take you through the projections, review preliminarily what some of the town administration focuses might be in the fiscal '19 budget, if there are any other associated board focuses or items, and to then review what our next steps are going to be. Brian?
Thank you. So as the town manager said, we tried to give this presentation in the beginning of September, just to give everyone an idea of what everything looks like. Very preliminary. Please don't get married to all these numbers. As we refine this process between now and the presentation to you in December, much of this will change. I think most everyone hopefully is aware, understands or is aware of Proposition 2 and 1/2 and what it does, what it does in terms of limiting what you can raise in property taxes, not what your actual property tax can increase by. Approximately 85% of all general fund revenue is represented through the tax levy. And then basically, you have a levy limit from the prior year that you can, is the beginning starting point. that you can, is the beginning starting point in each fiscal year, which is, when another slide we'll get to. How do we raise the levy limit? Annually, you're allowed to increase it by 2.5%. Historically, we have raised it at, at the 2.5% level. We're allowed to add any new growth that is what is in existence as of January 1st, which is certified by the Bureau of Local Assessment. And then you have overrides, be it a permanent override or temporary exclusions via either a debt exclusion or a capital exclusion. So, this slide here shows you the, what we project, and this is where some of the change could come in, to, come from initially, is we're projecting that the fiscal 2008 levy limit starting point will be $71.384,000. That's very preliminary because we have not got free, or, excuse me, not free cash, but new growth certified for fiscal '18 yet. We're currently collecting and analyzing the data. So, this assumes that it will be certified at approximately $950,000 for fiscal '18. Okay? So, on top of that, we've projected a 2.5% allowable increase in what we could raise in tax revenue, which comes to $1.784 million. And we have projected conservatively $700,000 in, in new growth, which is very preliminary at this point as we, we don't know what it will actually transpire through all of this year before January 1st of next year. So, our allowable levy limit before debt exclusions would be $73,869,000. Debt exclusions allow us to raise money outside of that levy limit for particular projects. They have to be approved at not only a town meeting for the borrowing, but at a ballot vote as well. Next year, we have $6.498,000. That is a reduction from fiscal '18, which decreases the maximum allowable levy limit because we had some rather significant debt exclusions that have been removed from in fiscal '19, being one of them is a significant land purchase from 1997 that the, it is now, in the last fiscal '18 was the actual last year of the payment. So, that is what is accounting for most of the debt exclusion reduction, which ultimately does reduce what we have here, but it also is a comparable reduction in the debt service. So, it basically is a wash in that respect. Local receipts, while we have continued to do fairly well with these, consistent with the way we have projected this, we've remained initially consistent to what we had budgeted the previous year and use the September 30th deadline of some of these other larger taxes coming, or receipts coming in to try to gauge where some of those will go. And we use that first quarter to gauge whether the $10.468,000 is on track or whether it needs to be reduced or, and/or increased. One important thing to note is that when we're doing this, the Department of Revenue only allows us to go up to prior year actuals. So, that's why we remain very, try to remain very conservative in this projection as we work through not only '17 actuals, but what '18 will look like. So, we kind of, in changing this a little bit, I've given a snapshot of the, the three major categories being real, real and personal property taxes. We're remaining consistent with an estimate of approximately $1 million to be transferred into abatements and exemptions for any appeals of property tax assessments. Local receipts, we did move up a little bit based on the history, but we've been, tried to be as conservative as possible. And then state and local aid, the $3.3 million number is exactly what we were granted on the cherry sheet this year, for most, for everyone's knowledge. The current administration has made an effort every year to increase local aid by the amount that they've agreed that the entire revenue collected by the state will increase. But the last couple of years, they've had some challenges with what revenue growth is gonna be, so we have conservatively butted up what we received in the, in the prior year or were scheduled to receive in fiscal '18. That projects out to $93,157,000 available to spend. This sheet just shows the last five years of revenue collections and accounts for any allowance for abatements in there too, to show what that history has been. Preliminary expenditures, and this is where I caution everybody, please don't get married to the fact that we're projecting a $1.8 million deficit today. It's, there are some things that are built into this that can actually and will actually change, some of that being health insurance is, as you'll notice there, is held static at what we had last year. Given the fact that you just, tonight ratified the agreement for Section 21 through 23, we'll be able to go back and refine this number based on what, not only what that projected cost avoidance will be, but what the estimated increase for the rate will be for next year. One of the other areas I want to point out is that we have about a $2 million increase in the transfer to Island Home. This is done preliminarily until we know what the certified retained earnings will be, and this number could potentially be adjusted. So, there are things that are still in flux, and this is very preliminary, but it does give us an idea of where we may be, we may be headed and what challenges or stress points we're, we're gonna be focusing on. Again, we've now included a, a five-year look back on the actual expenditures to date to give some historical perspective. And we've included some of the other general fund articles, which is just breaking them out because on the other page, we have them lumped, we have them lumped together in the $2.5 million number. So, we kind of show you what those actually look like.
Just a quick, I could go back just for a moment on the Island Home transfer?
Okay, sure.
So, that $2 million, you're assuming, what are you assuming in terms of the use of retained earnings?
Well, that's a discussion, once we have it certified, that we will begin to have on how much we want to allocate to the operating budget. If you remember last year, historically, we have transferred about $2.3 to $2.5 million out of, from the general fund. Last year, given some issues that we were all projecting with solid waste, we, with the sizable retained earnings that we had, we were able to lower that, but we've put in a placeholder in terms of this 3.5 number.
So, what's retained earnings these days?
Projection is, is probably gonna be in the, the substantial end of the $3.5 to $4 million range again, so.
So, there's money, you've got, there's a, there's a source there?
Yes, there is an opportunity to reduce this, if need be, to, to continue to fund that.
Question, Brian? On the Tuesday 13, the historical?
Yep.
What does CAGR stand for? I'm sure it's something simple.
Compound Annual Growth Rate.
Gotcha, thank you.
You're welcome. So, into the next slide, again, to Selectman Kelly's questions and points. Here is a historical trend of some of the, of the subsidy. Certified retained earnings, as you can see in '16, were $5.9 million. That was a year that we received $5.2 million for the certified public expenditures. In fiscal '17, we received 1.3. The...
But we're, we're also receiving, some years reflects multiple year payments.
That's correct, yes, that is correct. And which is, which Selectman Kelly has reflected in the $5.2 million.
Right, yes.
And at a higher funding level than it had been in prior years. So, still outstanding at this point in the, in the early stages of the process, free cash, it's scheduled to be, we're turning it over to the state. They will actually be here on October 4th. The goal is to have it certified and done by October 6th. Local receipts, as I've mentioned, we, we really use the first quarter to kind of gauge where we are. Union negotiations, any changes and increases in health insurance rates outside of what we just agreed to in terms of '21 through '23. Retirement assessment, local aid, year-round NRTA, which will actually affect us farther down the road, but is a concern as we still determine how we're managing through this. Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and we put at the bottom of here, just as a discussion, is any potential override for our Island Home funding of the subsidy.
Didn't show up on my slide, so I...
I know.
I don't see that within the realm.
I understand that. It's something that we've, I think we have discussed, but it's one of those things that's still...
Must be from a couple, a couple of years.
Probably, it might have been, yes.
I've got, I've got a blank one too, I think.
So, is I, so, in the, in the savings that we just heard from health insurance, is that 1.5 for us next year, or is that split? I can't, what, what do you think we can book of that?
Well, I've heard preliminarily that the rate potentially, even with the changes right now, based on the first few months of run, could, we're, we're projecting a 10% increase. So, we probably could be looking at cost avoidance in the million dollar, the million dollar range, roughly thereabouts.
Okay, I'm just trying to take us down from DEFCOM 5.
I know.
So, there's a million there, and there's $2 million in the Island Home retained earnings. So, there's three.
Yes, which is why I always like to point out on September 13th, as we do this...
No, I understand, but before, so we don't, so we don't leave the room...
Yes.
Thinking we're gonna have to cut 1.9 million out of the budget.
This is very preliminary.
I think that's important for people to understand.
And I, I can't stress enough to everybody, not only to the board, but to people watching at home, people who will eventually look at this online, that this is very early in the process, and this is, will get refined over these times. So, I don't want everybody to think the sky is falling either by any stretch.
But, just, you know, it, I don't know if it's a written policy, but it's certainly been the practice of, I believe, the board and the Finance Committee to expect that town administration submits a balanced budget. And I'm sure you're working to that.
That is what we are working towards.
Okay, good, thank you.
Absolutely. Okay. Oh, sorry. Okay, thank you.
Was there a direction you wanted from us?
We're not really done yet.
Yeah, I was gonna say, are we gonna talk about the general fund forecast, the summary?
Yeah, but before we get to that, I'm just looking back at some of our prior presentations that we've given around this time, and for, we've been changing it up a little bit here and there, but last year, that number, that 1.8 number was about 1.5 at this time of year. So, it does, it does change as we move along. So, I just wanted to touch base on a few things, and to find out really if there are any particular focuses that the board might want us to work in, at least preliminarily, as we start developing the budget for your, in our, our recommendations. We, what I've been kind of keeping track of as discussions have evolved over the last several months and maybe year are things like potentially a real estate program and perhaps more of a designated manager of it, perhaps some increase in resources for compliance and enforcement, including parking, facilities maintenance, more of a focus on that operationally. And now, we would work in some level of year-round bus service. And I don't, wasn't sure if there's any other things that you...
I would add, and really, it's pertinent to the conversation that we had on staffing of the Island Home. I agree, we have a real staffing crisis. I think we should carefully consider, we've heard the issues of the quality that we've, you know, had, read some reports on. I think we should very carefully consider, you know, either a program or an individual who's, you know, you know, who's maybe a nurse, who's a clinical nurse specialist on quality, on education, training. I know that the folks who are there now can't, when you're, when you're struggling to create a schedule, you don't have time to do those things. And if we packaged it in a, in a role, especially if we're gonna have more contract labor, it's gonna increase the education costs, kind of like we heard from, from the Police Department about the increased need for supervision because of the low tenure of many of the officers.
Got it, thank you. So, there are no other thoughts?
I think we should be looking about, thinking about a parking and traffic commission.
I, I met with government study, and that was one of the things I, I asked them to look at. And we're gonna have an agenda item next week to get input from the entire board on other things and hear from them what they intend to study. But that, that is something that was on my mind too.
And the other thought, think, thought I had is, is just, I think, I would like to be earmarking a certain percent of the money we spent on, on roads and other things. I think we should be finishing the in-town bike paths. I think it should be a priority. If we want, or in-town multi-use paths, if we want people in the busiest seasons to get in and out of town, walking and biking and using alternatives, we need to actually give them safe alternatives. I think that should be our priority going forward. Sidewalks and bike paths should get as much attention as roads and roundabouts.
And maybe this is slipping from the general fund to capital, but, you know, I guess I've been convinced that, especially as we've looked at the debt service declines, and we heard from Cinder about our capacity to borrow, there are a number of capital projects that I think we should very seriously consider. Certainly, the Old South Road corridor projects. And I think we should be a little generous this year, more than we have in the past.
So, those would, I think, definitely more be capital projects? And you all have a joint meeting with, I think it's pretty well-scheduled, with the Finance Committee and the Capital Program Committee on the 28th. And I think we're gonna be getting at, that, that's more of a process meeting, but we've been working with the departments so far to review what they're bringing in so far for capital. And there's definitely going to be a focus on those items that you just mentioned.
I think you also have to be careful, just because it's gone down recently, we haven't borrowed for some of the other major expenses that we voted. I'm correct on that, right, Brian? Sort of the sewer stuff, we haven't, those are gonna be some big hits. And so, I think, you know, I, I just think people get the impression that we have unlimited money, and, and that's not the case. And we, that's why I want to talk about that other slide. The projections going out are pretty dire. And so, I just think we have to be, be aware of it.
Thank you. So, as far as next steps go, we are intending to issue our budget instructions to the departments later this month. And I, I don't think there will be anything unusual about them than there have been in prior years, be pretty much the same as prior years. We then meet with all of the departments to formulate our town administration budget recommendations to the board. We'll probably have an initial ad hoc budget committee meeting, and that is the Chair and the Vice Chair of the Board of Selectmen, the School Committee, and the Finance Committee, the Superintendent Finance Director, and myself, just to review where we are and what sorts of priorities the different groups are looking at. We will make our recommendations to the board in early December. We will meet with the School Committee following that. Then the Finance Committee will begin its review in January, leading up to the April 3 annual town meeting. The, unless there are any other questions about the preliminary budget projections, we wanted to just quickly review with you our financial forecast, which, could you, could you bring up the old one? We've been working to improve the financial forecast, and we wanted to just quickly show you. So, you, this is probably a familiar-looking document. We've used this format for a number of years. And we've gotten some, some comments in the past that it's a little hard to work through and read. And it, it's one of those documents that's been revised repeatedly, year after year, and there are a lot of, what's that called when you keep revising the same document over and over?
Iterations.
Iterations, but it gets messy.
Gangly, I don't know.
Yes, it just gets out of control a little bit. So, we, now, okay, now you can go to the other one, the newer one. So, we've been working on more of a easier-to-read, neater-looking forecast. And we, we still are working on actual numbers and things, but we ultimately want to have a bit of a narrative with the board and the FinCom about items that are, and get the departments to look out into the next three to five years as to what items they think are on the, on that type of horizon. There might be mandates, there might be new staffing requirements, there might be regulatory requirements, things of that nature that we want to identify as early on as we can, even if we don't know exactly what the numbers are, so that when we're thinking about things like year-round shuttle service, we know what else is on the horizon, so that we can appropriately plan for it and figure out how we're going to fund it. So, Julia has spent quite a lot of time on this. Do you want to take us through?
Sure. So, this is really a very broad overview of what the work that lies behind this product. I think when I came into the job as financial analyst, this was really my first task, was to build it from the ground up. So, you can imagine, it literally has, you know, a list of all of the individuals behind and all of the positions and their, where they're headed in terms of their steps. And that obviously is a big driver. We've already talked about revenue, that's a moving target, obviously. And that one, you know, we've analyzed statistically to figure out, you know, what the trend is. And then, obviously, if there's a structural change, let's say we identify a structural change through, through our indicators, for example, or through actuals, we can modify it. all already know, but we've been able to dive down into the details of healthcare, of some of the other stress points, like retirement, like debt service. In this particular version, you'll notice that debt service is quite high. This is a tool that we use, obviously, it's, like I said, it's, you know, it's a work in progress, always, you know, but for a while, we were including a lot of projects that were on the map, not necessarily just what we know has been approved and authorized. So debt service, as Brian mentioned, doesn't really change anything, because it's awash with debt exclusions on the revenue side, so it doesn't affect the bottom line ultimately, although it affects taxpayers very much. And, you know, it's been a great tool, and we hope that it becomes something that, you know, is a talking point as well, and to incorporate whether it's capital and whether it's different scenarios, likely be mentioned in terms of ad hoc projects that pop up. So, you know, obviously, there are supporting documents to this, and, you know, happy to provide those, and if you have any feedback on it, you know, obviously, welcome that as well.
How are vacant positions reflected in your salary budgets?
We have a few positions that we know about, because, you know, sometimes we even have to hire mid-year, so we would know about those. We have some vacant positions that are funded.
That's what I'm talking about, those, because it's...
And they are very much in there.
So you build that into the...
Oh, yes.
Good, okay.
So if we have, well, for a while, I'm not sure of the current status, but we had firefighters that were vacant.
Okay, good.
And, yes, every funded position is accounted for, absolutely.
And so how do you project, like, if you look at a salary, you're going nineteen percent from seventeen to eighteen, seven percent, and then you go in straight threes across the board?
It doesn't really work that way, because you're really looking at, so if you think about the nature of the staffing group, in my mind, you know, we have a fairly older group of employees, in a sense that we have a lot of people that are, you know, step nine, or they're, you know, so maybe they're only getting an ATB, or maybe they're, you know, so they're getting their yearly increase, but it might be smaller than someone who's, let's say, stepping from one to two to three. So you might see bigger increases in the first years of this forecast, and then, at some point, everybody hits step nine. I'm not assuming they're retiring, you know, I'm assuming that they're staying on a step nine, so there will be some flattening, and that's a little bit, you know, it is what it is. So it's really built at the individual's level.
So you're underlying these numbers are built from the individual's...
Yes, so the labor agreements are in there, the pay rates, the, you know, everything's in there, of course, there's some assumptions.
So if the labor agreements change, then these go up or go down?
Then these change, yeah.
Gotcha.
And this is, I mean, that's amazing that you've done that, I think, but now you can forecast anything you want.
Yeah, I think the tricky part is really to get, in my mind anyways, is to get everyone on board as to, you know, because you can have very many versions, and we can look at different scenarios, and that's fine, as long as people know we're playing with something, and then overlaying capital, to me is, you know, that's kind of the next step.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Well, my other thought, Libby, if I can go back to the last one that you're asking, is we should be talking, we should be thinking about housing as a budget item somehow?
Housing, yep.
Yeah, I'm sure it's there, but...
Thank you.
I was hoping we might get some news about the tax.
So that's all that I had on those items, unless anybody has any additional questions. We're just going to keep moving on with the regular process, and the next step is the budget instructions.
Okay. So I guess we're just two committee reports. I have one. We're just starting our CPC reviews on Monday. I have to go pick up my wheelbarrow of packets tomorrow, but so I'll keep you updated on how that's going. Anybody else?
I just had a quick comment about First Way. It's done. I intentionally went and drove it, rode my bike through it, and walked it. Did you notice different things? And it's really nice. I think it's ninety-nine point nine percent done, and I talked to some of the neighbors, and they're really happy with it. I don't drop off kids or anything yet, but it seems to be working well with the flow. The curb cuts on Hooper Farm connects to the crosswalk, it's done really well. And the big rain we had, I think, last week, the drainage worked, so I just wanted to come in, the DPW, the neighbors, everybody who kind of came together and made that work. It's really nice. If you haven't seen it, drive by or walk through it.
I used it a few times before. It was totally complete for like the last couple of weeks of camp, and it was a great route, and I'm glad it's done for the start of school.
It's a good example of doing, like, doing everything you're supposed to do. We didn't just open it and do one thing and close it and have to come back again. They actually took time to do everything, and I think that's a pretty good model for going forward on some of these projects.
I just, perhaps a future agenda item sooner than later, I know we've been talking about the license applications and the procedures around bathrooms and score footage and occupancy and those kinds of things, and I know at our meeting in August, you asked to have that report back next month, which is September, and I, before we lose that month, I'd like to get that back on the agenda if we could.
Okay.
Second?
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Merci.